Well, good evening, everybody, and thank you for having us here this evening. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Josh Welsh. I'm a great hall student at Saint Louis Secondary School. As well as I serve on the advisory committee as chair. I met Mark some time ago, back in December, during some time, whenever I seek his help. And shortly afterwards, he did help me in regards. And also, he approached me in interest for General Hospital, this project that we are going to be presenting to you this evening. So I prompted myself, and I said, "Sure, I'll be on board." I mean, it will be of my interest outside the holder, and that's my pleasure as well. Only for me, but as my family and my friends, their family and their children, will need the long-term care. So that's a little bit about myself and why I became involved in this project. I have some projects with Mark.
You've been formally introduced.
Thank you, your worship. First of all, I want to say thank you for giving us the opportunity to make that presentation this evening. I want to say hello to a few of the familiar faces that I certainly around the table. Your worship, I'm going to be talking this evening about the sale of the General Hospital. My comments are going to be, my opening comments are going to be the same as my closing comments. And this is what I want to focus in on, that it's a community proposal. The only way that this is going to be successful is if we're all on board. If we're all going in different directions and calling the minister about one thing or another, it's not going to happen. We have to be on board with respect to a community proposal. I'm going to ask, and I know that we've had some political differences, those of us around the table, that's no secret, we have to put politics aside on this issue. It's a major issue. It's a lot of work. There's a lot of heavy lifting to do. But if we put politics aside and focus in on the goal, I think we will be successful. The most important thing is we have to work together as a team. The essence of the plan is designed not to cost the taxpayer one cent. There's been some talk or discussion out there. We're not here, we're not asking for any money. We're not asking for a loan. We're not asking council to guarantee any loans. Part of our vision for the facility is going to require very little repairs or very, very few renovations. If we need money, we want to leverage the equity in the building and benefit from what we would call long-term leases, and I'm going to explain that as we go on. Or we want to also have the ability to sell off parts of the building if we need to leverage some money. Just in terms of process, so that I can bring everybody up to date, when the hospital went for sale, there wasn't a lot of discussion about it. It's all about who did what to who in '52, and we should have acted 10 years ago, or we should have acted seven years ago. The fact of the matter is, we are where we are today. And when everybody first heard about the hospital going for sale, I said, "How can it be? How can a hospital go for sale in something that we pay for?" The building, and I think it's also at the essence of the debate or the discussion, the building already belongs to us. We've already paid for it with our tax dollars. And if you walk up and down the hallway, you see that people have donated all through the years. The hospital already belongs to us. This is an important part of the discussion. The minister encouraged us publicly to bring a community proposal forward. In other words, if there was an alternative for the building, she encouraged us to bring it forward. So our group acted on that. That's what we're acting on. Now, what we want is, we want the building to be used for the common good and the social benefit of the community, with a focus on senior issues. It's not just about long-term care. It's about wheelchair-accessible housing. It's about affordable housing for seniors. It's about dementia care. It's about assisted living. We're talking about office and commercial space, medical offices, government offices, the art galleries looking for a home. We've got the university group that's being formed, they're going to be looking for a home. This council just recently passed funding for two seniors groups that pay money in We have to respect the timelines that are involved. In other words, the hospital board, the hospital has their own issue. They're moving forward with it. So what we did was, we made sure that we were following the timelines. So we submitted an offer. The offer, our offer that we submitted has five conditions. I think that I had sent copy to the clerk. We have five conditions. We just recently signed an extension of that offer, giving us until June the 3rd to meet those conditions. We want to form a not-for-profit organization. We talked about the money issue, that the Minister of Health has to pony up the $2 million, the asking price. We talked about having the support of the task force. This council was already on board with respect to forming the task force to put an offer We want the ability to sell off parts of the building if we need money to leverage, to get some of the work done. But this is the most important thing, and that's what brings me here tonight, and our group here tonight, this council has to support this project in order to move it along. And what we're asking for is the administrative and technical support, facilitating meetings, moving us, it has to be a not-for-profit group that's going to run it, and the circumstances that we're caught in, there's new rules with respect to nonprofit groups. They come into effect in July. So there's a lot of work to do in that regard. We're going to need, we're going to need help with that. But most importantly, we have to send a strong signal to the ministry. If it's a community proposal, and we're all going in the same direction, the minister is not going to have an option. You don't go to her asking for permission because the building already belongs to us. Now, there's a similar project just up the road in Barry, Ontario, and that information only came to light just recently, and one of the members of our group just visited there. And there's a document, I think that he emailed all the councils, but it's worthwhile, I'm only going to read the last couple of paragraphs. "I recently visited this site and found a mix of residential, commercial, business, and community operations that is a growing concern. The construction of Victoria Village was a boon to the local economy and workforce, and the completed project has become a thriving microcosm of community, a self-sustaining financial success, and a sought-after location for residents and commercial tenants." Our offer is based on the same thing. Your worship, I'm going to close with the same comments. What we're looking for is, we want to make sure it's a community proposal, and we want to work together as a team. So we're hoping for the council to send it to administration for a report. And I've already met with Norma back once, and I've offered to meet with the meeting and to work through the dynamics of it.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Josh, did you wish to add anything?
No, your worship, I think Mark shared pretty much it.
All right. A couple of questions. Someone will be reporting to the board for the administration to report. Counselor Tito, second question to Josh. Any questions to Mr. McDonald?
Mark, I understand where you're going through your mission, but my understanding is, it doesn't meet provincial standards in terms of long-term care beds, just as St. Joseph's Villa didn't meet the criteria that the province wants. How are you going to get around that? St. Joseph's Villa had to be built new, at a cost, I believe, $35, $37 million. And my understanding, the cost that we're renovating the building, the General Hospital, would be in the area of $72 million. How do you get around that?
For your answer, Mr. McDonald, just one blind call is to, to direct your questions to the chair, please. Sorry, Mr. McDonald, please.
Thank you, your worship. And through you, your worship, it's a legitimate question that Sid is asking, or Counselor Gardner is asking. This is what I want to try and focus in on. We're not just talking about long-term care beds. Long-term care beds is only a small part of it. And there's a lot of dynamics at play with it. But the plan is that we, the public, would not have to spend any money on the renovations. In other words, if we were to allow to sell off part of the building, which is what they did in Barry, there might be somebody that's going to go in there and put long-term care beds in. I'm not saying that the city of Cornwall should be in the long-term, or getting into any more long-term care business. There's a whole business plan that has to be put together. So with an answer to your question, some of those figures are wildly exaggerated. If you're taking in the whole place, that's not the plan. That's not the plan.
Supplementary, even though you're telling me that we couldn't put any long-term care beds in there, because it doesn't meet the criteria of the size of the rooms that are needed and the movement that has to be in the area for seating.
Yeah. You know, again, I repeat, it's not, we're not just talking about long-term care beds. And to get into what's going to be required in the ultimate, final plan of it, I have no idea. But our plan is to not spend $1 on alterations or renovations. We're thinking that we can leverage some of that money from other sources. So it wouldn't involve large amounts of money.
Thank you. Counselor Saxon followed by Counselor Tito, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, Mr. McDonald. Mark, I tell you that 179,000 square feet in that building, I understand that the building next door has to be torn down as a result of mold. You're looking somewhere, anywhere from 100,000 to 500,000, just to tear the old clinic down. A sister, an old sister told me once, "There's a lot of care, a lot of maintenance, a lot of love been put into that building, but the structure itself, it's just a combination of concrete and motor and a building." The care that was provided was excellent. The memories will live forever. I appreciate what you're doing in trying to get, you know, keep the General Hospital, because it was paid for by the taxpayer. My main point is that there is a shortage of over 200 beds for long-term care. If we give the $2 million back to acute care, then we are defeating our purpose. And $2 million should be coming to the city for more long-term care beds. And what, how are you going to move, and how are you going to adjust the cost? The minute you move any asbestos, you're looking, Mr. Mayor, at roughly $1 million just to move any asbestos in that building. So how is Mr. McDonald going to accommodate, I see exorbitant costs to this building. Now, do you have a plan, or do you just want a recommendation, and for us to do our homework and to help you out? We're looking at extensive cost at that building. I'd like to keep it, but I don't know if anyone can afford it. Do you have...
Mr. McDonald, opportunity to respond.
That and that.
Thank you very much, and through you, your worship. You're touching on a wide range of things, and at this point, it's way too early to get into some of that, what's the cost to tear down the building, or you went from mold to asbestos. What we do know is, we have a 10-year waiting list for somebody to get into social housing if they're in a wheelchair. And there are some of those rooms that are in there, they can move into today with zero renovations or alterations. So it's too early at this stage, there are legitimate points, but it's too early at this stage for me to put any type of number on that, and that's why we needed resources. And I'm only saying this to move the process along. In other words, you would be agreeing to it in principle, when the report comes back from administration and can answer in detail some of those questions, you know, we'll move it along further. But we have to move the process along, and we need the council's support to do that. We're not committing ourselves to any funds at this point.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I may, just up and down. So if we do get permission from the ministry, and we find that the costs are extensive, what happened? It's not a city problem? It's turned over to Mr. McDonald's group? Is that the idea?
I'm not going to venture any more in depth than Mr. McDonald has already. We're looking for the possibility of having this matter referred to administration for a report. So if you don't mind a...
In that case, I'll be in favor.
Thank you, Counselor Tito, followed by Counselor McDonald, please.
Thank you, your worship, through you. I welcome your presentation tonight, but I think it's important to have this kind of approach taken anytime that a community group... By the way, I'm keeping your chair warm. Thank you, you come around and we'll see you soon. I've sat on the board at St. Joseph's. I'm on the board at Lynn-Soyland Lodge presently. I was also a member of the Board of Directors of the Foundation at the General. So I have a little bit of information, but what I find, your worship, is that the more information that I've gathered over that period of time, the more I understand that I don't know a damn thing when it comes to hospitals, long-term care, and all of that. And former Counselor McDonald, you will remember that when we had the event of the RCF Association, my comments were that I was there to educate myself. I'm still going through that process from my perspective. I want to thank you and the group of the community for bringing this issue forward. I don't know where it's going to lead, but I'm sure that we'll support the idea of having administration deal with whatever the questions are, that will address whatever the future of that building and the type of care that we need in the future in this community. So thank you for doing this, yes.
Your worship, just a comment with respect to Counselor Tito's comments regarding, it is confusing. It was confusing for me, and we sat on the Cornwall Housing Board together, and the Counselor Elaine McDonald is the chair of that board now. It's not just long-term care. It's accessible housing. It's affordable housing for seniors. It's maybe rent geared to income. It's assisted living. There's all kinds of assisted living places, you know, popping up, and the need is going to be greater. So there are a number of areas. It's not just one area. So your comments are well-thin.
Thank you. Counselor McDonald, followed by Counselor Carr.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and through you. I second the comments of Counselor Tito in commending the group for all the work they've done, and also such a worthy goal. What I'm curious about, just to get more specific, is what exactly is it that the group is asking for from the administration in terms of administrative and technical support?
We're asking administration to facilitate some needs, to help us form the not-for-profit group, because there's some new regulations coming in. And also, it's what the group did in Barry. The city council played a role in facilitating the move from the ownership of the hospital being a progress to the nonprofit corporation. You know, there was, some of it, there's a lot of red tape and a lot of technical things. And one of the things that Norm had mentioned was that there's a possibility that you would have, you would have the opportunity to open some doors for us, you know, to advance our position as we go along. So those would be the areas that we'd be looking for.
And a second question, I know that you're going to touch on the minister, and you also, I say we, because I think you were at the same meeting I was, with Chantelle McClair of the Linds. Has your group directly been in contact with the Linds group in any way? I know we're waiting for a report from them, actually.
No, actually, I think in terms of process, the best way for us to handle it would be that if this council supports it, it goes to administration, it comes back and gets the support of council. We have to get busy with the, we have to convene a meeting of the task force. You know, we have set the task force, in other words, the Linds got to come to the table there. We can't wait for the minister to come. So we'll convene a meeting, and they've got to be on board with the proposal as well, because the condition is that the task force is in support, which covers our MPP, the MPP from Glenn Gary Prescott Russell, a member of the health board, and a member of the Linds.
And then, just a last question. If you're speaking of your group as establishing a nonprofit organization, and I'm wondering, probably the closest model I can think of in town would be the hospice, because it's non-governmental, really?
To Counselor McDonald, I think you're right, similar to that, but also similar to Cornwall Housing, the way that we sit on the Board of Directors there. In other words, I've been getting tons of emails from people that want to get involved, you know, in different roles, but a step in the process is, there has to be a general membership meeting where the people want to be on the Board of Directors, they put their names forward, and there'd be a membership, but, you know, similar to the hospice or to the Cornwall Housing.
Thank you.
Continued by this, Counselor Carr, followed by Counselor Tito.
Thank you, worship. My question is going to come off to the chair. When you talk about this Cornwall General Site, are you thinking that the primary use afterwards would be as a seniors' housing unit, because of your experience on Cornwall Housing? Would that be a major program?
Yes, a multi-use senior facility, not just long-term care, wheelchair-accessible housing, affordable housing for seniors, that would certainly play a big part, yes.
And the restrictions that you might have for long-term care, you wouldn't necessarily have for seniors.
You're right.
So when you talk about coming here, and you know the way the system works, is that this is going to be referred to administration for a report, you would hope, I would think Mrs. Dagle would be one of the people who's important, who was very important to you. And you also know how long those reports take sometimes. Do you have a timeframe that we'd have to live with, that in fact is approved and goes to administration for a report?
Actually, sending a signal tonight that it would be unanimous that it goes before a report is enough for us to move on to the next step in the process. In other words, there's other areas that we would have to, that we have to make sure that are in place prior to June the 3rd.
Okay, and the facility likeness, the way you described it, wouldn't just be important to the CNO, and also, again, to the chair, it would also be very important to the surrounding counties, given your intention to get them on board as well through the chair.
Well, and another good point, and through the chair to yourself, that was the idea, in the five conditions, we put that the local task force has to be on board, and we've already asked, or you folks have already asked for a representation from the counties to be on that task force. So in other words, we go to them with the proposal, and they've got to take it to their respective, to their respective councils as well.
Okay, to this date, we get to the chair, when you talk about the organizations you would speak to to get them on board with, has anyone turned you down to this point?
No.
Okay, thank you very much, good luck.
Thank you.
Tito, followed by Counselor Murray.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you, Mr. McDonald, I have to say thank you very much for your presentation. It was very well done. I guess, but if you look at the whole scenario, we're looking at, of course, obviously doing this in phases, and we're in the very early phase one, and what you're looking for is no money from city council or from the taxpayers, but you're looking for a commitment from the council to keep it moving forward. So I don't have any issues with supporting that, because I think that there's lots of groups, nonprofit groups in our community that would benefit from, you know, lower rents and different areas where they can offer their services, and many of these groups have already outgrown their existing buildings and don't have room to even keep up to what the need is for the residents of Cornwall. And I realize that long-term beds are, you know, not our issue, and you clearly said that, you know, that would be left to put aside, and that if there's an investor there that would like to invest in that, that would be something else, that's way down the road. So I think that, I understand what you're saying, is that, you know, there's more power if, when we have a community proposal, if our city council is behind it. And I'll look forward to the report that will be coming back, but again, thank you. And certainly, at this early stage, we'd certainly be in support of looking forward.
Thank you very much. Proceeding now to the rest.
Just through you to Norm. Norm, I'm looking at the request here, and just so you understand, it's easy to send a report back to administration, but I'm confused about some of this, the parameters of it. Make staff resources and technical assistance available, and provide administrative support number two, provide administrative support to our Board of Directors for future detailed site plans. Sounds to me like a huge task. So are you comfortable with the direction that council is putting back into your life?
Mr. Mayor, I was concerned about that statement a little when I first read it. And Mr. McDonald is quite correct, but we did have a meeting last week, and from that meeting, he alleviated a lot of my concern, because when I first read it, I viewed it as, you know, engineering kind of input, site plan preparation, building code issues, building design, all of those things that really were not suited to do this for someone else. So we're not the owner, so we really cannot do that kind of thing. So based on the discussions I had with Mr. McDonald, he really wasn't looking for that or isn't looking for that kind of help. He's looking for more of a, as he says, facilitate type of meetings, perhaps like on development, social housing, you know, looking at what opportunities we may be able to help out with respect to that. So that's the kind of approach I will take, or we will take as a team in preparing your report, Counselor.
So you feel comfortable with that? Good initiative, and good luck. Counselor McDonald, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. McDonald, for your presentation, and thank you very much. It's very powerful for the two of you to be working together. I'm familiar with Mr. Welsh's work on the youth committee, and it's impressive. And as Counselor Murphy said, it's much more symbolic when you have different generations working together. I was at a community session this morning talking about just that, and here you are doing that. So congratulations on that pairing. I want to also just say, and I think we should say this every time we talk about the former Cornwall Hospital site, that it's not just, you know, a great location within the city of Cornwall. It does have a very important history of care, and that needs to be acknowledged by the council, by the city, by the hospital. I think we've done that sufficiently, and I think we should do that every time we talk about this project. It's important. Now, you've had a lot of really good questions this evening, and you answered every one of them. I was very encouraged to hear that you also had a meeting with the CNO. So you're moving forward in a way that is very efficient. So thank you for that. Obviously, the question now is, what are we going to do? How much is this going to cost? Our role is always to balance supporting projects so that they move forward, so we're going to get other projects to it, but also balancing those physical realities. So that's what we need to figure out. You know, there's sort of a lot of scary talk about site plans and how much that stuff costs. So those are things that we're going to want to talk about as part of the report, and we have to weigh that out. But in terms of how you've been moving this forward, moving the community, it's very impressive. So thank you for raising these possibilities and opportunities, and we will look back to you.
Just a quick question, if I might. I would thank Counselor Grant for this question, in terms of trying to clarify the request from the Coalition through you, Mr. McDonald, Mr. Welsh. Mr. Oback clarified what the technical support could not include. I'd like to give you and Mr. Welsh an opportunity to further define what, as clearly as possible, I understand that you're in a very early stage here, but it's important for all of us to understand as clearly as possible administrative and technical support. Maybe start with the second one, because Mr. Oback spent a little bit of time on technical support. And I'll allow him to come back to it, because I want to make sure we all understand what the request is, so that administration can report accurately, based on the request before through you on behalf of the Coalition, so that then we can make this informed decision based on that information.
Goodly, worship. It's probably the most important part of the whole process, is because the message has to be clear that it's designed not to cost the taxpayer any money. We're not asking for a loan. We're not asking to guarantee a loan. We're not asking for any money to put in for a report. We're asking for the help from the corporation to facilitate from being a provincially-owned building to a not-for-profit corporation. If there's going to be some reports or stuff that has to be, you know, to be presented along the way, the not-for-profit corporation will have to raise that money to get through studies or those reports. I'm not coming to council for that. I had those discussions with your CNO about the engineering department. I understand that fully, and I don't think that anybody would expect the engineering department to start drafting plans and all the rest of that, no. It would be designed more to facilitate, because it's a not-for-profit corporation. One point is that when I drafted the five conditions, I lifted some of the information from the Barry Initiative. In other words, the council there facilitated the same thing, from being a government building to being a not-for-profit. It's going to take some time. It's a lot of work, and it's going to require, when the Board of Directors gets involved, it's going to be a lot of work. Well, for those people that sit on some of the boards that we sit around the council table, I know being on a Cornwall Housing Board, you know, you think it's just an appointment. It's a lot of work. There's a lot of reports to read, and there's a lot of information you have to go through before you make a decision. It would be a similar process, your worship.
To that, you quite often understand from the mention of the Barrie experience. I'm not familiar with all this background, but from your data, your information, from your research, what the, this village in Barrie, was that building, was it previously a hospital, a long-term care facility, or otherwise? Was it owned by the city?
It was Victoria Hospital in Barrie area, from what I understand. And it became Victoria, it was an old hospital, similar to what we have. That's my understanding. I haven't visited the facility personally. I've looked at some of their data and some of the information on their website. It's very impressive. It's a multi-use seniors' facility. There's government agencies that rent in there that pay some of the rent. They have life lease units where couples can buy a unit, it's wheelchair-accessible, and the demand is quite high. There's waiting lists for the... So anyways, that's where some of the information came from, was the Barrie Initiative.
My last question, Mr. McDonald, I don't think this is where you're physically responsible, and you reiterated that position this evening in regards to cost. You would understand, I'm not talking about the cost of the actual administrative report, but on a look-forward basis, have you given any thought to what you and the Coalition might consider a reason? Because there will be a cost, obviously, you know, based on the findings of administrative report. Have you given any thought to what you might consider as a reasonable cost for the city of Cornwall to be prepared? Understanding that you're not asking for money, but in-kind services of some sort will have a cost attached to them. And what a reasonable cost might be?
Well, I would hope that it would be paired along with the recently formed seniors' working group that you want to put together, or that this council's putting together because they're asking for the same thing, like administrative reports. So in other words, if there's going to be a cost, you know, in terms of the manpower through economic development or social housing, that it could be partnered with that group as well, your worship.
In an ideal world, I would agree with you that it would be just that perfect, the fact that two were on the same timelines. But I think given the timelines that the Coalition has, that might not be practical. And I don't want to, you know, hit one against the other. That's not, that's not what we're here to, and I certainly don't want to do that indication with you or anyone else. But thank you for answering our questions this evening. Thank you. I'll give you an opportunity to make a closing statement, a thank you to you and Josh and the rest of the Coalition for bringing this matter to where we are at today. And we look forward to certainly, I think my colleagues around the table, there's just a consensus, but I think a great interest in following with administrative reports. So I'll give you an opportunity for a closing statement.
Thank you, your worship. I want to say in closing that I have not been alone doing this. There's been a number of people doing a lot of the work. We've had meetings. Several of the councilors have been out to meetings, and I've met some people out at the hockey games and whatever, and a lot of people are talking about it. We appreciate the support. We appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight, and we look forward to the recommendation coming back.
Again, thank you very much to both of you and others, the support of the Coalition. Councilor Ray, for the question, always in favor. So it is unanimous. Thank you, your worship.